Okay, guys, I got such a long, and we're starting.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Approve agenda. There's no changes on the agenda. I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, turning discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Pode? Motion carried.
Sorry, Linda, just second that.
Linda did.
Oh, Linda did, I'm sorry.
And I don't think we have anybody here for the equalization meeting. Is that correct?
Well, there's nobody that is contesting their real estate taxes. But I did, when I went down to go pick up the tax rolls, Donna Steckelberg is the director of equalization, and she just presented usually the findings for the year. Last year, Bearsburg went through the full evaluation, so all of the properties in Elsister and Bearsburg were brought up to where they should be. But this year, the overall assessment, the countywide assessment, was below the 85%. So they had to make some changes to various communities to get them up to the countywide assessed value of 85%. And so Elsister experienced a 5% increase on structures, as well as Dakota Dunes, El Point, Jefferson, and the Lakefront properties in North Sioux City. So those, by assessing a 5% increase on structures to those communities is how they achieved getting the countywide values up to 85%. So if you're entering into your equalization, I split them out by wards, and basically it's just to look through and identify the properties. Just kind of look through and see if you think that they are, they seem logical, that they seem within their values. And this is Ward three.
Oh, that's three.
Yes. Sorry, that's Ward three.
So you got two. Damn, you got two. All right.
I have all of two.
Yes. So, no, this is, these are what they look like.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, sharing, so you know. Want to go through and kind of look at them, so it tells the property. They'll say in the property, the address, and then you're looking at the assessed values.
Oh, down.
Yeah, some of them are kind of weird, if you get into actually some of these houses. So there's, this is the land, and that's the assessed value.
Okay.
Yep. So it's just kind of to look through. You just find yourself and see if that's right here.
Hey, Pat, can I ask a question about that?
Well, I mean, just use that as like a standard.
Like, how do they determine what city they're going to increase, do you know?
I did not ask Don that question, so I don't know. But I know Elsister has gone through a couple of different adjustment periods. I'm sure in the next couple of years, we will be on to do a full one.
Someone's a guy. Oh, did you remember that? You're playing in here? Yay, I saw you guys sitting down there working.
That means we can camp now. We're here.
Okay.
That's very good.
That's by a metro.
This one's close to us, Ward three. Do your last.
Pat?
Yes, sir.
How come the Baltic Telecom Cooperative is non-tax? It's middle lines?
It is. Is that the whole, uh, East?
That too.
You know, I'm not sure on that. Non-tax, and Northwest End Valley.
That was what you asked.
Oh, okay, then I was dreaming.
It's probably centrally assessed, like the utilities.
I would say with the first 10 pitches.
10 pitches, okay.
They'll take all of the property and then divide it up. I think the answer's central.
Thank you, sir.
But there's, if you call the Department of Revenue and ask him personally, does utilities, he'll give you more definitive answers.
Okay.
It serves the business.
It was, I saw, yeah.
No, it was a really, I saw two.
I think the logic is great, I just, I just didn't get the case to ask here for maybe.
It seems like there was one.
I need the orange.
Was there?
Oh.
I watched, I know it was after. Now, let me go off for a minute. Just one page. Yeah, I saw him.
A lot of water.
He bought two lots.
Actually, that's the prison land.
Mm-hmm. Yep, he bought two lots. I thought, oh, isn't that showing up anywhere else?
Well, maybe I missed it.
Cause one lot is for the garden.
Okay, I wondered that.
And then he kind of set his house in the middle of the two lots.
Oh, okay.
Right there.
There it is. Okay.
Yeah, so there's the other one.
There's the other one, okay.
Yep, all right.
Thanks.
What are you thinking, tiny house?
I thought, normal houses, not.
Is that the rest of the home too? Yeah. That's Ward three. No, this government kid was spending, you know, like, ooh. I don't know.
Did you guys bring your family this week?
Yeah.
When she was gone? Was she from that city? That's okay. Did you put your, did you?
I had it laid out, but I just barely walked in the door.
No worries, I only made three copies, cause I wasn't sure. I would make it laid on the table. I would make a couple of ours.
See, she's a different. I know, it's my headquarters, you're stuck in Kansas City. And this area is west, so it's.
Hannah, I don't know. Can't keep up with her.
No, we can't, we work our changes.
What's your?
Make maybe.
I've got extra copies in there. Some of us weren't as stupid enough to remember. Okay.
Everything look okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
So, we're done with that, then we want to move on with that.
So I will have you out of equalization at 6:17.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we can move on to number five, public input.
I have, Vicki Larson. In front of the council members are some documents. One is the FLSA. This is in prep for the conference, the comp time. I gave you the document that outlines comp time, what is, oh, I can't think of the term. Accepted and non-accepted comp time. It deals with duties, amounts of pay, et cetera. And among that, those documents are, is a quasi-log of comp time of Dale, Lonnie, Pat, and Wanda. Pat would be exempt from getting comp time by definition. That's why I put that out there. By her own description, which is an exhibit that came out of my lawsuit, where the Office of Hearing Examiners, where she outlined what her duties were. The duties exempt her from that. And the last page, or the second, another page, deals with a readout that was put in a form where it compares Pat's time and Wanda's time. I'd like to have you take a good look at that. The other thing is, is that in my FOIA, or my sunshine request, I was not given any approvals of overtime or comp time. The last sheet in that packet, or in that grouping, is a request for comp time or overtime, and it needs to be signed by the mayor. The thing is, is that Pat cannot okie dokie her own comp time or her own overtime. That's a lapse. So I'll let you folks look at those. As I said, I've outlined that, I put it into form, I highlighted some of the areas of interest to this council. It would be my wish, as a taxpayer, that you table the comp time discussion as it relates to Pat and Wanda, or the finance officer, until you can familiarize yourself with the FLSA and how it applies.
We have spent extensive amounts of time and research on this very thing. No decisions have been made yet on what we're going to do. Most of this information, we're already familiar with. We've been working with the city attorneys to figure it out. We know that things were probably not done correctly, but until we all come together and figure out what we're going to do, I don't have an answer for you. I don't think anybody at the table probably has an answer for you.
Okay.
But we are aware.
Okay, I wanted to make sure, in case you weren't on that situation. And the other thing is, is the lack of information given on a FOIA, again.
What specifically didn't you get?
I did not get any approvals, where there were written approvals for okie dokie on comp time.
This is what you wanted.
No, 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 the, I wanted, I wanted to see where the mayor signed off.
Right.
And the need for that, and I got nothing in that from the finance office. So the only thing I got were those pages.
So they don't exist?
They don't exist, and those pages, where they're handwritten, you don't have supporting documents, didn't happen, so.
Where did this form come from?
That I made up.
Well, it's a personnel issue, and according to our personnel manual, when there's a personnel issue, we discuss it in executive session. And then when a decision is made, that will be up to the council to decide if what's going to be public information.
And with all due respect, a personnel interest, a general interest, it's a general thing. If it's dealing with one person, then it's executive. If it's dealing with a broad field or a global field, no, it's open to the public, so. That's all, one other thing, on your end of your South Iowa, because you annexed in the elevator, the culverts on the corner of that street have taken a hit. And as I understand it, the city owns half that street, and the county owns the other half. So you probably should brace yourself for replacement of culverts and stuff. Just a pointer, so.
Who owns the other?
The city and the county.
I think it's the township.
Township.
The county owns the fairgrounds part of it. So, and that was my, when I visited with Ray Rago some time ago.
Is it the Culvert or down on the curve, down?
It's Culvert on the Curve.
Well, my information, or what I believe, we don't own that part of it.
Well, then your street, your street catches into it, so you can work it out with the county, so.
That part belongs to the county. Okay.
Mr. Nelson, did you have anything to add?
I do not, thank you for asking. May I be at liberty to speak if I have something to add?
Sure, you sure are.
Thank you very much. I have nothing.
Any other public input?
Uh, yes.
Okay. These are the people that brought the tire shop.
Yep, my name's Taylor Forbes. This is my wife Jenny. We live between Harrisburg and Canton right now. And March 1st, we closed and own the shop now. We're doing some painting and stuff inside and cleaning up, and hope to May, June, be open.
So in a similar business, is probably what you guys were accustomed to, tires, auto repair, some farm type, you know, repair if needed.
My background, I've worked at Graham and Sioux Falls. I farmed in Nebraska for a time, and I've worked at T.O. Haas Tire in Nebraska too. And in May, I will graduate from STI with automotive. And I'm working on being ASC certified too, so.
Horrible.
Yeah, we're excited. You guys, everyone in town's been friendly.
Very welcome.
I heard you were a mechanic, have you had any luck finding one?
Honestly, I haven't started that process yet. We got kind of busy with some other things, so hopefully in the next week or two we'll start. I know Pat's given me a couple areas to work, so.
So you'll do like oil changes and that type of stuff?
Yeah. Yep.
The gentleman sitting next to you is Gordon Richards, he's with our newspaper.
Okay. Yeah, she sent me up some stuff for advertising and looking for help, so. I'll be probably in contact with you.
Well, we're very, very happy to have you in our town.
Thank you.
Appreciate your coming here.
Yeah, no, we're excited, so.
Good deal.
Sure are we.
Thank you. At our April meeting, I did not know they were coming tonight, so at our April meeting, they turned in their application for a CDBG loan, and so I'll put that on the agenda for April.
Okay.
Okay.
That's good.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay. No other public input? Curbin Gutter, Joe?
I sent an email last, Pat, was it Friday? I think it was Friday, something like that.
Wednesday, actually, and Lonnie responded on Friday.
Yeah, okay. About the curb and gutter that my mom replaced down there on West Third. And I know the timing when we replaced it, you guys had put your equipment away, no big deal, whatever. But now Mother Nature has unleashed her fury on South Dakota and everybody else, and the gravel that they packed in there between the curb and the street is washed away now. And so I'm just asking right now if we can have the city guys go down there and pack some more gravel in until the weather gets warm enough where we can actually repair the street. Cause that water's gonna get underneath that brand-new curb and gutter, and it's gonna cause a lot more problems than anybody wants to deal with, so.
I see that Lonnie sent you an email.
Yeah, but I didn't get it, and Pat sent it to me this morning, actually, so I just got it this morning.
Do you know if he did that today?
I drove by on my way up here, he, looks like he didn't get time to do it today, so.
Okay.
I talked with him, not necessarily about this, but about another thing that had to do with gravel, and he said that they hope the gravel pile falls out.
Oh, I'm sure. Yeah. So, we just appreciate that. And then one other off-topic thing, on my way over here. As you know, I don't live in town anymore, I live in Sioux Falls. And the city of Sioux Falls just declared a state of emergency for the weekend for the Big Sioux River to crest at record levels this weekend. And I'm organizing a group, about 30 people, to help sandbag on Saturday afternoon, so if you know anybody, your grandkids, your kids wanna come up and help sandbag, we'll go up in Falls Park filling sandbags, if you wanna come up and help.
Okay. Got anything else, Joe?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
2018 annual report.
Uh, oh. I made three copies, cause I wasn't sure, you can toss those around, I'll get the rest off right there.
I can do it on the computer.
We can share.
Yeah. No, I have, I need more, so.
There you go, it's her small print again.
Sorry.
Bring my habit along, Robert.
Thanks, Sid.
Thanks, Joe.
Did you guys all get, so, I don't know.
Oh, you can print one for me, I'll take it, but I can pull it up on here too. Thank you.
So, the timing of last week's, or last month's meeting, having Dwight go through the audit was very appropriate, because the annual report is essentially the same thing as an audit. I mean, the layout is exactly the same, the forms are the same. So, page one of the report is actually just the publication that will be going in the paper. It is the overview of the general fund, the rest of the enterprise funds, and the library special revenue fund, and now we have a new one, our community center fund. And the bottom portion of that lists the bank balances in each of those funds. So this first page that you see will be what will be in the newspaper after this is approved at tonight's meeting. Page two of the annual report, for those of you that have been on the council a little bit longer, this was the fund balance sheet that we used to get. It's not a form that's required by Department of Legislative Audit. It's just something that gives you a pretty good at-a-glance as where the funds were on December 31st. It also has the bond balances on there and the CDBG. Um, it also has the bond balances on there and the CDPG loans outstanding on there. So, this is not a required form. It's just something to give you a good at-a-glance where we are. Page three is the statement of net position, which is a, a balance sheet type for the general fund. And again, the statement of net, net position is just your snapshot of net worth at any given time, which at this time, we just use December 31st, so. Um, so it's, sorry, I said it was just governmental, but it's governmental and enterprise funds. Page four is what they call the general revenue worksheet. This gives you an overview of the revenue that the city receives. So it's the charges for services that we provide, any grants or contributions that are given, any, um, capital project grants, and then the general revenues like taxes and sales tax dollars. So it's just kind of a little bit more breakdown of the revenue items over the course of the year. Page five is the statement of activities. And again, they list, um, the different, uh, general fund and governmental funds, or general fund and your business enterprise funds. And it starts out with the expenses and then goes to the revenue. So the first column there are the expenses and then columns two, three, two, three, and four are the revenues. And then underneath that is your business activities. So that's the water, sewer, solid waste, and golf. And then your tax revenue is down below. Pages six and seven is balance sheet for the governmental funds. So it's a list of our assets, accounts receivables, non-receivables, any deferred revenue or unearned revenue. And that is then the fund balance in each of those funds at the end of the year. Pages eight, nine, and 10 is the income statement. And then also, it reflects the changes in the fund balance for the governmental funds. So again, general fund, CDPG, second fund, community fund, library. And then the expenses are broken down by the different branches. Pages 11 through 13 is the statement of net position for the enterprise funds. So it's the same concept. It's just a snapshot of our net worth at some point in time, which that point is December 31st. So it shows your cash, accounts receivable. Because we have the loans, we have restricted cash. Identifies all the assets with their accumulated depreciation. Any liabilities that we have and debt obligations. Pages 14 through 16 is the required supplemental information. It's the budget comparison.
I have an extra $10,000 in, uh, sales and use taxes.
Yes.
That's good.
It is good.
Expect that to continue?
You know, um, we are about $8,000 for the year under our best year. We're still better than last year, so. Every time we get a sales tax distribution, I compare it the last five years just to see where we are. And, um, 2016 was our best year. Um, so, as of our last distribution, which would have been the 5th of March, um, we were not as good as our best year at this time, but we're, um, better than we were last year, so, yes. And once the tire shop gets up and running, that too will be a bonus. Page 17 is the income statement and changes in fund balance for enterprise funds. Page 18 is the changes in loan debt. And it's broken out by general fund debt and enterprise debt. And then if there are revenue bonds or general obligation bonds. And I just put that little part down at the bottom because it's helpful to me to know, um, what the balance is of each loan and how much principal each loan we paid off and where are any balances on each one. That helps me with the rural development reports that we have to do. Now you'll notice on that page, it does show that the lease truck is a-go. And that's because we did a CDPG to ourselves, so. And the last page is the statement of cash flows for the enterprise funds. So it identifies where the cash that came in, the expenses that used cash, and then there's some non-cash items. So this is the same layout that, that audit is based on.
Do we have any discussion on the annual report? Okay, can we get a motion to approve, to approve the 2018 annual report?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2018 annual report.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Motion carried. Comp time discussion.
There was a study, a group got together when we were, did some, I figured out some things. Right now, the, the main issue we have is Pat has accumulated more comp time than, uh, or as, or as much comp time as is legally allowed. So we were discussing some ways to try and get that taken care of. Here's some jets, some, some suggestions. Is, uh, first of all, Pat will make a firm attempt to limit, limit hours to forty per week. Leave on time, not worth work weekends unless absolutely necessary. The problem is there are a lot of times when she has to have a block of time set aside so she can do things like the audit and budgeting and that kind of stuff without having, uh, people coming in and paying the water bills or otherwise asking questions. So that's why some of the weekends, uh, weekend times and late, later in the daytimes happen. We discussed paying out the comp time and discussed, um, paying it out in one lump sum or over a six-month period. And I think we maybe kind of came to a compromise that it might be best for all to pay it out in six pay periods, which would be three months, so that the staff can work uninterrupted on the difficult tasks. There was a suggestion that the city office close at 1:00 P.M. on Tuesdays. They will not go home. They will work, but the office will be closed. Pat said she will not be continuing as chamber president, which could, uh, free up some of her time that she spends working on those kind of projects. And, um, the other thing we had is a suggestion. We're about to hire or attempting to hire an auditorium custodian working about ten hours a month. Isn't that right, Pat?
Mm-hmm.
We've considered, or would like to have the council consider possibly adding another ten to twelve hours per month to that person's job with the idea that they also spend time doing online ordering, things that like at, uh, for supplies for the pool, supplies for the golf course, those kind of things. Uh, preparing paperwork for council meetings, getting all the, everything ready and on the table. Filing the paperwork after council meetings. Assistant reading water meters. Uh, stamping the water meter bill postcards. Doing local drop-offs. Like, there are a lot of things, there are some, some things around town that, uh, like at the bank, uh, Peach Produce, probably the, uh, toll and stop. They take, uh, instead of sending, um, checks out, they would just have them, someone drop them off. So that would be something that would, uh, could be, this person could do to take time. It'd be time for the, uh, office staff to get caught up in possibly answering phones. And one of the reasons that, uh, this came about, or the, we thought we would need a few extra hours is because the city has the, the added responsibility of the cemetery, which is, you know, we don't know how many hours that's gonna take. But those are just some suggestions that we came up with. You know, is there anything else, Tom and Melissa?
I have a question for Sam and he's a bit busy right now. He has not had time to answer my questions that I have remaining pertaining to this issue. So I think until I do get those answers, we should hold off on deciding anything. Maybe next month we'll be able to finalize it. Not that he'll be any, like, busy between now and then, but.
Might be a little tired.
Hopefully he'll at least have an answer for some discrepancies that we have.
Well, they definitely could use some help in there because they're, I, I've been in there, I, I stop in every day. And it's busy. It's just continually busy. And I, I believe that a little bit of help would make a good goal, I think. And I think it's a good idea if we could get ten hours a month for somebody to help.
A month or a week?
Ten extra hours a month in addition to the ten that the, the cleaning services would require.
So, yeah, Melissa and David and I were at that meeting and, uh, we put some effort in to try and figure a way to do this. And I think we came up with some pretty good issues. And like Melissa says, she's got some things that Sam and we can hold off on doing anything until we get a response back. He's pretty busy right today, I'm sure. Okay. So we'll hold off on that. We'll just table that for now. Finding the zoning.
Um, so a representative is supposed to be coming down for CCO. They are attending another meeting, so, um, they might be a little bit late, so.
Okay. Oh, we can jump down to executive session. Pursuant to SDCL one days, two, five days, two dash one personnel.
I'll make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two dash one personnel.
I'll say it.
So we're gonna go with Dave?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to enter an executive session. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? We'll be in executive session at 6:50. Do you guys want to present our finding?
When we looked at the complaint... When we looked at the complaint and heard from the witness what was happening in the city office, and we're going to continue with the election as it has been running in the past.
Okay. Thank you, David. We can get back to, yeah, where were we? Pat.
All right.
Finding and zoning. Pat, there was some, a couple came in here and they asked if they could put a garage on a vacant lot.
You can sit. There's no one in the chair.
And the, I know it says that we cannot do that, but after thinking about this, is there a way that we can, or do we want to change the wording so that that can happen? Because my thinking on it is if we have a vacant lot with nothing on it, it usually does not get cared for well at all. If somebody would put a garage in there for, used to use as a garage, not to assemble junk in, which is, to me, the lot would be, the property would be better well maintained. And actually, there'd be more of a tax benefit at the same time with the, with the structure on it. I know it says it has to be a home, but have other cities run across this and how do they handle it?
Some of our older ordinances do have it. The way they word it is you have your, your list of your principal land uses that are additional. So you would list it as something like a standalone garage as a principal use, whether you want a conditional or just a permitted use in whatever district you want it. So that's how you kind of work that in. A lot of communities have gotten away from that because they do run into the problem of someone coming up from Dakota Dunes or down from Sioux Falls, putting up a building, storing their junk in there, never coming back. So eventually the city has to take their building of junk.
Is there a way that could be put in there that if they do that, they would have to be a resident ancestor? Could you do that?
I don't believe you can add a residency requirement on owning anything. I know in some countries, like in Mexico, we were talking about out there, you have to be a Mexican citizen to own land. But I think in the U.S., our constitution would prevent you from putting a, such a limitation.
So is that the only problems that places have had, like what you were using as an example?
That's generally the big one. That's why they prevent, that's why they don't want just you to have a fence on the lot because then people come in, dump their junk and leave it. Because it's, some see it as more of a economical way of trash disposal. But, so that's, I mean, there are ways. We, you probably can't go as far as it can only be done by a resident. If that was the case, I mean, you'd want, they could certainly combine the lots if it was next door. But if it's a standalone lot, you can make it its own use, but we want it to be, the things you can set conditionalize are time, place, manner, pretty much. You can set, limit the size. You can limit probably what it's used for, but you can't limit who owns it.
So it could be done so that somebody could put a garage there, just a standalone structure garage, without being a resident, I mean, without a principal residence. Say they could live in one side of town, put one on the other side of town.
Yep, or they could live in Beersford and put one up.
Yeah.
And you could limit it by size. Size wise would keep certain things out, just because of its.
So like, it has to be this big or it can't be?
Yep. If you didn't want them to just use it as like a boat storage building, you could certainly limit the size. That would prevent a boat storage.
Yeah.
Or there are, there are ways to kind of, you know, finesse what you want to do.
What if you wanted it to be like a double car garage, like a twenty-four by thirty-two? I mean, you could put a boat in a garage of that size.
Yep.
Well, personally, I wouldn't, to me, putting a boat in there wouldn't be a problem. I wouldn't, you know, in a double garage, I don't see where that would be a problem, but.
It's filling it full of junk and garbage.
Yeah.
And that's.
We have enough junk and garbage.
That's kind of hard from an enforcement standpoint, too, is, you know, they put up the building, they just shut the door. How are you going to know what's in there?
Well, I guess if the door was shut all the time, you wouldn't see it.
As long as it's not piled up outside. That could be one of the.
Well, see, there is a, then it would be, the code officer could say, that's garbage. So that could be, they could be forced to clean that up. So that wouldn't, that shouldn't be a problem with that. We're just trying to get, find a way to help these people if we can because they would certainly like to do that. And that's, that's what we're trying to do.
Pat probably told you the situation, about a fifty-foot wide lot.
Okay, so it's.
You know, so if you take seven foot out from each side, you're not going to put much of a house there.
Yep. In some situations, you have rules regarding, smaller lots, you have some rules on non-conformant lots. Where they could, you can build in line with what's around it, even if that presses into the setback a little bit. Because there are lots that are below, you don't want to have a lot that no one could use just because it'd be probably a hard argument that your land is worthless. So there are, there are some ways around it. But if the garage thing is something you're interested in doing, we can certainly think on it. It'd fall under there as a, you'd probably want to make it a conditional use, just so it's, they don't just get a building permit and go. There's some, you can attach stipulations to it should you wish to do so. And you can revoke the conditional use if it forms a problem.
Thanks for that.
Yeah.
So if you'd like me to, I can write something for you.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that'd be good as some way that we could, you know, if we do decide that, then we could go about doing it. You know, and what we would, and what it would state. Yeah.
Are there any, what type of limitations would you like on it? Is it a size thing or what they can do with it? Or just no taller than or, because right now, if it's a permitted or conditional use, it's can be as tall as your maximum height limitation, so potentially thirty-five feet.
Well, yeah.
So if you wanted to limit.
I got a thirty-five foot building in there.
You can get a silo.
I guess I would think it should be, what's the height of a normal double car garage?
Well, you got eight foot walls and then you have, say you put a five-twelve pitch on it. So you've got another six feet, so say fifteen feet. Yeah, on a normal garage. I don't know if you'd want to go any higher now or not. I don't know.
Well, that, that would eliminate, that would eliminate somebody putting on a thirty-five by a hundred garage or building on a vacant lot.
And we could limit the size of the building, too. Say twenty-four by twenty-four. That's a standard double garage.
Which one pickup will fit in? Any more one pickup fits in a standard double garage?
Yeah. Anymore. Depends on what pickup. And then two, you know, if they put a seven or sometimes even an eight-foot garage door in, say if you're going up any slope at all, some of these new SUVs going in there can't clear the door header. So maybe the fifteen foot, maybe you need to go to say maximum of eighteen in case somebody wanted to put a, kind of like SUV in there, they could get it in the door because they could put a higher door header in. So maybe you'd want a maximum of eighteen feet.
Is, just from the practical standpoint, is that something you think you'd get kickback on from residents if they have houses and then there's an eight-foot just garage in the lot? Would you, would that be a political toxic kind of issue?
Everything's intoxication.
Potentially, yeah.
So can't we just change it so that it's like, if the lot is smaller than your typical lot that you would build a house on, then you can build something else there? Can we change it that way?
Well, there are some twenty-five foot lots around here you could not put a twenty-four by twenty-four garage on. Because when you got a twenty-five foot lot, you got to have a seven foot each side. You can only get ten feet in there. So you don't have a ten-foot wide garage on a twenty-five foot lot.
Unless you get a variance.
There's why?
You could get a variance.
Well, yeah, you could, but that's a step or point there, too. And there are twenty-five foot lots around in this town.
I guess I would like to see what you can.
Okay.
Yeah. See what you can write up for us and send it to us and we appreciate it.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Do you have any thoughts from a legal standpoint of what?
Sitting discussing, I was thinking about the twenty-five foot lots and why not just out of the box say that they're too small to put any sort of structural structure on at all. Because I would think that, you know, if that became for sale, the neighborhood client, and if you allow them to put some type of structure on it, you'd create kind of a false sense of value. I agree with your comments about, I don't know, if you can just do it to residents, I agree a hundred percent on that. I was thinking about what's your building code would say about siding, what type of sightings you could put on it. And if it, if it had the battery complimentary to the buildings on each side, I think it would go a long way to keep the adjoining property owners happy. And, and then I sat and, and thought about, are you, are you or are you not going to require cement driveway? Because if you require a cement driveway, then you're going to get a more serious structure, perhaps more serious use than if you got like gravel or just crushed rock, that sort of stuff. And I, I don't, you know, when they build them, are they building them with or without electrical power?
I don't think there's electricity on this particular lot.
No, I don't. No, I don't think so. I mean, there, there were, there was a house there long before I had it removed here, but I don't think there's any electric to it.
Because if you had to, if they had to have electrical power, then it becomes a much more serious landowner because, you know, the power company is going to tell you, just don't turn it on and off. You're going to have to have it turned on twelve months out of the year. And I don't know if you're going to do anything with water and sewer.
Well, they could get power to it pretty easy because there's a power line goes right down the alley right behind there. So we could come off that real easy and get power to the building.
And, and I understand that there are, you know, you'd almost give lots away, sell the material structures out of there and at least put something on because it would be a big improvement.
I, I would assume they'd want power in it, you know, for a, for a garage door and for lights and electric.
That should probably be something that's required.
Yeah.
Would it be your experience that the more it costs them to get into the building, the better quality of the tenant you're going to have?
Usually, yeah.
Well, we could require them to put a, well, they'd have to have, have to have some kind of a service, you know, a service shut off for it and, you know, require them to put a hundred-and-twenty amp service in the thing. Well, sixty wouldn't be, wouldn't be enough because it's a guy who was running a power saw or something in there. He'd want.
Yeah, okay.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't want, well, you could even say two hundred amp, you know, make them put a two hundred amp in there and then they could run.
I was thinking two light bulbs and the door open.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that'd be sixty.
Let's see what you're coming from.
Yeah, we could, we could put it in there where they'd have to have a two hundred amp service. And then, you know, a lot of people would say, I don't want to go through that for a storage thing. But if we did that, why, that might keep somebody from just wanting to build a storage shed.
Another, in addition to just the garage, one situation that comes up would be kind of a standalone man cave kind of deal. Is that something that you would want to go in there or do you just want it to limit to storage rather than it being a somewhat regularly occupied structure?
Must have toilet sink in bed.
Depends on if you want to cater to a, a certain market or if you just want to have it kind of be broad as it's a building you can use.
Well, do we, would we want to get into the fact that make them put a bathroom in the thing? I don't think, you know, I think that's a little bit far out. I think if we just had to make, make sure they put power in, two hundred amp service. I don't think we need to run.
Eighteen, thirteen foot tall, minimum or maximum eighteen foot.
Yeah. And then, I don't know if we'd want to have them run water service to it or not. I don't, I don't know.
I don't know about the water, but should have, should have a concrete driveway.
Can we say that, Patrick, when we allowed all those other materials for off-street parking? Can we be specific in this one and say you have to have a concrete driveway? When our other ones allowed rock or stone?
You, for, you could, but is it, is it practical to do so? I don't know. That seems like where you'd get kind of a, my driveway cannot be crushed rock, but that has to be concrete. Is hard, hard surfacing would be cheaper to some extent than concrete if it was just crushed rock. But is, would that do enough to prevent bad things? Or do you want to go, requiring concrete?
What do you guys think? Would you want to go make, have them put in a concrete? I don't know. There's a, there's a lot of them that, like Pat says, there's a lot of them do have hard surface with just crushed rock or gravel.
But the inside of the building.
You got a concrete, yeah, we got four concrete slats, absolutely.
And if we've got other places, if our ordinances say that you can have crushed rock or whatever someplace else, this shouldn't be, I don't think this should be different than that.
Do you want a minimum size? Like they could put up a lawn shed. Would you want them to have a hard surfacing to a lawn shed?
No, no, I, I think if they're going to put a garage on there, I think it should be at least a double garage, twenty-four by twenty-four. And they could go eighteen foot high maximum. Because there isn't any of the houses that, that wouldn't be higher than any of the houses. You know, you wouldn't want a structure, you got, you got some of the sort of homes, you wouldn't want a garage in the middle that's sticking up six feet higher than those. You wouldn't want that.
Are you going to do it as a conditional use? Are you going to?
Yeah, I think so. Probably a conditional use is what you want. And as part of the additional use regulations, we'd have a kind of carve-out for standalone.
The conditional use would allow the neighbors to participate in and favor and not favor. And I think would allow the city to say, okay, well, here's what it has to look like from an S-belt perspective, the type of siding, those sorts of things, colors and.
We'd write in some, you know, basic requirements, but with a conditional. We'd write in some, you know, basic requirements, but with a conditional use, you're free to... You have some latitude on what you want to do there, but just some base requirements so people have an understanding ahead of time.
Yeah.
But if they want to put water and sewer in, like say they've got a bay, they want to let their vehicles drain in the winter or whatever, they can, right? We're not limiting that they can't.
Correct. Unless you wanted to make that a condition that they're limited to...
Well, you know, the more that they put in it, the better of a structure it's gonna be, you know?
The more taxes, tax revenue's gonna bring in.
May I be recognized? This has to do with the subject at hand.
Go ahead.
Garages, storage and particulate coming out of it if they're using the garage to do extremely light manufacturing or doing things like that. You have chemicals that could be stored in that garage. You have particulate that could be in the air and coming out, and those are hazards that are, I believe they're already in your ordinances, but they're in state ordinance. You don't want somebody in a residential area... I could put a plastics operation in a double-car garage. So, you want to be really careful contamination-wise. So, you want to look at that, too. It isn't... I mean, and footings on... In footings, how far are you gonna require that your footings go down? Forty-eight inches or whatever? So, it's... That's my observation.
With your conditional use, you can control all that.
Yeah.
And I think that's just one of the beauties of the conditional use and your uniform building code's gonna tell you what your footing's gonna be.
Okay. Okay. Well, you got a pretty good idea of what we want.
Yep.
Okay.
Sounds good. I will get Pat a draft probably later this week.
So, we can talk about it in April, at our April meeting, do you think?
Yep, you said April first?
Uh, the fourth.
The fourth?
No. April first. You're right.
Yep, you can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Now, we're down to finance office. Reminder, there's enough to...
Lonnie's gonna put this out on Facebook or he may have already done it today, but Lauren Fisher called and because the roads are a little bit soft and the frost coming out and all that stuff, he asked that when you put your garbage can out, keep it out farther away from your curb if possible so the truck doesn't have to get so close to the curb. So, that's something that's coming out. I didn't mention it at the beginning of the meeting and I don't know if Larry did mention it, but Sam and his wife had their baby at two o'clock this morning, a little girl named Madeline Rose. And so, that was one of the cards, so did everyone get that signed? Okay, good. And Dan is feeling pretty good. He's following his directions to a T. So, he's hoping to be back to coming to the meetings as soon as he can and so that's the other card. And we are gonna send a fruit basket to him at the house as I get well. District meeting. Did you say yes, you are going or no, you are not? You are not? Okay. So, I do have six of us going to the district meeting. So, that's Thursday night. Meeting starts at six o'clock. I did not... If we leave like at five-thirty, that should be fine, I would say. So, it's just at the gateway in Gate City? Gate City?
It's at Gate City in Canton.
Yeah.
Six o'clock is the social...
That's at Canton.
Yes. So, or maybe you want to leave at five-forty-five, that's fine, too.
Couple people are agile and can crawl into the third row of seats. I have a vehicle that will take six people.
Okay, that's all good here. Yes. Yes. So...
Am I one of the six?
You are.
Okay.
So, I have Tom, Darla, you, Dave, me and Lonnie. So, what time would you like? Five-forty-five? Does that work?
Let me grab that face.
It does not matter to me. I don't want it to be the right at six, but...
Okay. Oh, well.
Whatever time.
Passionably late.
Five-forty.
Five-forty. Okay, so be here at five-forty on Thursday. Friday is the South Lincoln Rural Water Annual Meeting at Upridges at one-thirty. I will be going. I don't know if anyone else is going, so if you want to go, let me know. And the landfill is scheduled to open on April first and I talked to Lonnie today and I think we're gonna be able to do it. So, the snow has really melted. It's got really good exposure, so it should firm up out there with all the sun that we're gonna be getting. So, he thinks we are go. And Alpota's already bringing stuff out there, but they're just not getting very far into the gate. So... But anyway, so those are my updates.
Okay. Last item, we'll get a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. We are adjourned at seven fifty-seven.
Nice to meet you.